The audience who wishes to address us on any issue that's on the agenda at this time? Hearing none. We'll call the meeting to order officially and have a roll call of attendance, please.
Done.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need to approve the consent agenda, and on this consent agenda, we are accepting $3,300 in donations from our community groups and members of our community. These funds, we are grateful for the move. Always use them for the needs of the students based on the wishes of the donor. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tonight, we have some presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Jen, for the work that you've been doing for it, and the support that you're bringing to learning also at Wildwood High School this year. And we have been fortunate enough to have a STEM classroom at Wildwood this year, and also, some of the things, and other classrooms too, are using this outdoor learning space. And we wanted to share this outdoor learning space with you and be able to show you that, so Julie Comfort is going to talk a little bit about that, and we have a couple guests here that we'd like to give awards out to.
Hi, I'm Julie Comfort. I'm the STEM teacher at Wildwood. And we're so fortunate that the summer Luigi Vigiano created an outdoor classroom for us, and all of the students at Wildwood, all 600-plus of them get to use it. So not only in STEM, but if they want, a teacher wants to take them out to read a book, it's a nice quiet spot to read, or just get out and enjoy nature. So we have a few pictures we want to show you. There's Jeannie. Jeannie's been a big part of this. She's been kind of my sidekick, helping me come up with ideas. On the left picture, you'll see she got woodchuck nursery, woodchuck tree service to donate some mulch for us, so we could mulch the path up to the outdoor classroom and in the outdoor classroom. And there's some of the kids helping there. And there's Luigi in the outdoor classroom. And there it is in the, when it's all finished, the summer. You can see some really cool little mushroom down there. If you look closely, the kids are really good at observing and seeing neat little things in nature. And there's some of the kids on the path. On the right side of the two pictures, Jeannie collected some seeds from the O-H Anderson wildflowers and brought them over, and our kids were able to spread them out on our campus, so we'll have some wildflowers too.
Yeah. One more, okay.
And then there's the kids spreading mulch again and just out in nature. The second graders adopted a tree for the year, and they observe it throughout the year. You can see their little cushions they sit on, and they observe, and they find all sorts of cool things. There's the kindergartners in the fall on a little walk, enjoying the leaves, just the kids up by their trees.
They don't look very excited, do they? Looking, they're so excited when they go out there.
And then Jeannie also wrote a grant for us through the Greater White Bear Lake Area, is that how you say it? Foundation, Community Foundation, for binoculars. And we got a set of these for the STEM classroom, so the kids, when they go outside, they can see the birds up high in the tree. And we do have sand cranes, so they get scared away easily, so I'm hoping this spring we'll be able to, from a distance, observe them, and so it's kind of cool, so. And that's the last one. Oh, one more. There's the kids loving their trees.
That's great. And we just wanted to thank them and give them certificates, and really appreciate it, so.
We're going out.
Thank you so much. And then Luigi. Thank you so much.
Do you want to give credit to the garden club? By providing the funding, it wasn't just me.
It was, yeah. That was a great way to make it. Thank you guys, I really appreciate it.
And if you go, Mike. Luigi. You guys come in the middle here.
Yeah, in front of us here.
I'll figure it out. You just stay there. No, I always, I might wear you today. Okay, Lucy, I come out to you. Great, thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you. You've always been in. I always am.
All right. Superintendent Dufferin, Chair Schwartz, member of the board. I'm Aaron Forsyth, Activities Director at the high school. Here tonight to just give you some highlights from our fall athletic season and talk a little bit about opportunities we have for growth, to continue to be student-centered through activities and athletics going forward. We had a very good fall season. We had 434 student athletes out, which is over a third of our student body. Our tennis team was, again, Metro East Conference Champions. We had Annika Munson, seventh grader, win the singles 4A section tournament. She qualified for the state tournament. Boy soccer, Metro East Conference Champions and Section 4A Champions. They finished their season with a record of 15-3, coached by Dominic Isaac. Football team, coached by Dave Metzl, district champions for the first time in three years. They finished their regular season with a record of 6-2. Girls swim and dive had a very productive season. They finished second in Section 4A, and they were also runner-up in the Metro East Conference, finished their Metro East Conference record with 6-1. They had three relay teams qualify for the state tournament, 200 medley relay, 200 freestyle, and 400 freestyle relay. Girls had a great experience, coached by Mike Goldman. And girls soccer, Section 4A Champions and back-to-back state champions. They have, our girls soccer program's coached by Mr. Dave Wald, eight state titles, which is a state record for schools in Minnesota. So, some highlights from our fall season. And something else I want to just take some time to talk a little bit about, just so you're aware, and that's the State High School's Why We Play initiative. And an overview of it, and just three, basically three main topics I just want you to be aware of. It's a transformational approach to education-based athletics. And when we talk about high school athletics, we're unique and different in that we're not the club experience, it's a $15 billion business across the country. And that's not high school athletics. We're also not necessarily community ed either. There's a difference there, and both of those have a great purpose. It's just important for us to recognize that the State High School League experience is unique in that way. And part of that is the State High School League's Why We Play initiative, and that's a focus on purpose-based athletics, and making sure that we're student-centered, and we're striving to give our kids the best experience possible. So just three things I'd like to just highlight, and that's transactional versus transformational. And when you think of a transactional coach, when I say that, the picture in my head pops up is Bobby Knight, win at all costs, and we're going to do anything we can to win. And it isn't always the best experience for our students, or the most opportunity for them to grow as people. Transactional coaches see whatever sport they're coaching as a means or a way to build and develop character amongst their student athletes. And we strive to have a balance there. We also need to talk about and differentiate between goals and purpose. We all have goals. Every time we step onto a field, or a court, or a rink, or a mat, we want to win. In fact, polling just under 200 of our student athletes this fall, the number-one goal our student athletes had was winning. They wanted to win. But that doesn't define us, or define them, or who we are, as a school, or as an institution. The purpose is why we're actually out there, and polling those same students. So the number-one reason why our student athletes in the fall came out for whatever sport they participated in was to have fun. And the second most common reason was to be with their friends. So if we can be cognizant of that, as we're coaching, and help build character through sports, we're going to have a better experience. And that brings me to the final topic I just want to bring attention to, and that's performance and moral character traits. When I talk about performance, character, I think of a resume, things you'd want to be on your resume, like responsible, organized, diligent, hardworking, all very important things for us to develop in our kids. And when we talk about moral character, not to be too gloomy, but I think about a eulogy, something you'd want people to say about you, they were generous, they were kind, they were loyal. And we use those two things, performance and moral character traits, as our foundation of how we approach coaching. And the reason I bring this up today is Why We Play is, provides a curriculum for us to give our coaches tools and the skillset to enhance our student athletes' experiences while they're participating in our programs at our school. So it's something hopefully you'll hear more about as we go forward, and it's something I'm looking forward to. We have over 90 coaches at Modest High School, when you count our volunteer coaches, and all of them have a purpose statement right now tied to Why We Play. And it's something that we're going to build on in the future, and something hopefully, I'm excited for you guys to hear about going forward. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions for me, Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're, you're going to, that's your paper. Sorry.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Board Members, I'm Kathy Weiland, Modest High Community Education Director, and I'm here tonight to provide an update on Modest High Community Education. If I can do it. The update is broken down into five parts, beginning with the annual report for the last school year, and will end with the collaborative initiative called "The Many Faces of the White Bear Lake Area." The annual report is submitted and required by the Minnesota Department of Education, and so we do it every year. Last year, we served a little over 10,000 community members of all ages, and that's about 500 more than we served the previous year. And that number would be higher if we included early childhood, but they submit separate reports to MDE. One of our biggest jobs is working with, work is scheduling and working with the many groups who use our district facilities. Last year, we worked with 47 groups, and we estimate that that brought in over 18,000 visitors to the district. The board heard the audit report at its last meeting, and I would like to highlight information specific to the Community Education Fund, or Fund 4. When we consider it with all district budgets, it's 4.1%, or about $2 million. The Community Education Fund balance is separate from the general fund balance, and last year, we reduced our fund balance by $11,000, but we still ended the year with a positive fund balance of over $600,000. Within the community ed fund balance is a separate fund balance for the preschool program called "School Readiness," and that fund balance was $50,000 in the red last year. And we improved that this year by increasing fees for early childhood programs and getting a tighter handle on expenses, and we still ended the year in the red, but only by $5,000. So, we'll be working to make sure that that trend continues. And finally, community ed supports the general fund by contributing a little over 18% of its budget to the district, and we do that through chargebacks and helping fund some staff positions. And one of my goals this year is to look into that a little deeper, and then share my findings with the superintendent, and then determine what further action will be taken. On facility improvements, at the October school board meeting, I mentioned community ed's involvement in a variety of facility improvements. And since that meeting, we've added the passenger railings to the community ed bus, we built a carport or shelter for the bus and two district vans, and that will give them some protection from the elements. We ordered a Gaga ball pit for O-H Anderson. It'll be on the outdoor playground, we're pretty pumped about that. And we'll be refurbishing the shed by the football stadium, and looking at making some improvements at Wildwood's outdoor playground and the fields here at the district center. We're in the news. We send photos regularly to the White Bear Press. And we were fortunate to have suburban community cable TV tape several events this fall, including the most recent one, which was "The Many Faces of the White Bear Area." And speaking of that, it's an initiative focused on equity and honoring our past, understanding the present, and planning for the future. It's a collaborative effort with several partners, including White Bear Area Schools, the White Bear Area Historical Society, the Greater White Bear Foundation, and others. And Kevin's an active member of our steering committee. The first installment was Original People Dakota and Ojibwe, and it was a success, with 79 attendees at Modest High's event, and that included Kevin and Julie and Barb, and then White Bear had 101 at their event. The next installment is on changing traditions in the 1850 to 1950 time period, and the last is on shifting demographics with the baby boomers and migration. Information on these installments and some associated events we're really excited about, specifically February 21st with Jim Lane, our high school life science teacher, and March 20th with Duchess Harris, who is a district parent and author, are listed on this flyer, which each of you should have at your place. And now, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, where's the Duchess Harris one on here?
It's on the back page, at the bottom, Hidden Human Computers. Her grandma was one of the first Black women recruited to work at NASA.
I saw the movie.
And she, and her book wasn't, they didn't use her book for the movie, but it's a similar story. And she was named after her, too.
I would add, on the Duchess Harris piece, if there's one thing you do, well, Jim Lane is really good, too. Okay, if there's two things you do, it's the Jim Lane tree cookie discussion, but the Duchess Harris, she's just an amazing, amazing woman, and I wouldn't miss that.
And the, the Modest High event was in the White Bear Press this week, B-section, but still in there, so.
It was very enjoyable. It was really, a lot of good information. Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Can anybody else? Thanks, Kathy.
Luke.
All right. My turn. All right. So, last week, we ended off with a bit of a cliffhanger. Wanted to see how the girls swim and dive team did at state. They did not place, but according to Frances Fritsch, a member of the Modest High Girls Swim and Dive Team, who sits next to me in Spanish class, it was quote, "still fun." So, I'd call that a win. Let's move on to Wildwood. In November, on the 16th, the Komosu visited kindergarten classrooms and shared what I would assume to be different animals, so kindergartners got to learn about different animals, the animal kingdom. On the 19th, second graders watched a puppet show put on by Pacer, which is a center that raises awareness for schoolchildren with disabilities. And on the 20th of November, there was an all-school pajama day, which I can assume must have been a blast. On December 4th, Wildwood and O-HA had their Hour of Code, in which students got to practice and learn about the art of coding. And on the 7th, kindergarten had their Family and Friends Day. Moving on to O-HA, on November 20th, there was Turkey Bingo. This was actually live streamed through YouTube, and we had Mrs. Bowens, the principal, and Mrs. McCabe, the school counselor, calling the bingo board. Mrs. Bowens was wearing a turkey leg handband, headband, and Mrs. McCabe was in full turkey costume. It was a sight to see and a blast for the whole school. In December, and this is actually happening tomorrow, so I'm kind of cheating here, but here we are. On the 14th tomorrow, there's a Saints North roller skating party from 5:15 to 7:15 for O-HA and Wildwood students. And on the 14th, there is a History Comes to Life 3rd Grade in-house field trip. Moving on to the middle school, all right, I think this is pretty cool. From December 3rd to December 13th, there were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 different concerts. There is a 6th, 7th, and 8th grade concert for band, and then a 6th, 7th, and 8th grade concert for choir, along with a Glee Club concert. So, I'm sure those must have been a blast. Finally, moving on to the high school, winter sports are in full swing. Boys and girls basketball, alpine, and cross-country skiing. Archery, gymnastics, wrestling, and boys and girls hockey are all occurring now, and are in the height of their season. On November 20th, there was a janitorial and lunch staff appreciation day, where students would help the lunch staff and janitorial staff clean up after lunch, and make a better effort to help keep the school a cleaner place. And I can say from my own experience, the school is now continuing to be a cleaner place. So I think there are some serious benefits that came off out of that. On November 26th, there was a fall jazz concert, and on the 27th, there was a symphonic band concert. And now upcoming, this Saturday, SLC, or the Student Leadership Council, is hosting a Parents Night Out from 5 o'clock to 9:30, at which I will be working. So, if you own or know any children, ages infant to 5th grade, drop them off over at the high school, and we'll take great care of them. It'll be a blast. And finally, on December 17th, this next Monday, there is a winter choir concert at 7:30. That's my spiel.
All right, thank you very much.
I think we should save you for the end in the future, you know, like the grand finale. I think people would stay. Luke's reports are just like that.
They're really bad.
Thank you very much.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, November 15.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. If you have some discussion items, calendar of events, anyone can call anything out on it?
I'd like to add something that's not on the calendar. The Wildwood Artist Series on December 21st is doing a sing-along with Ross Sutter at Wildwood Elementary. They'll sing with kindergarteners, or with first graders at 9:35, kindergarteners at 2 o'clock, and second graders at 2:45, and all the board is invited to come sing along with the elementary students.
What day is that again?
The 21st, next Friday, week from Friday. Your time, yeah, before the break, your time choices are 9:35 to 10:05, 2 to 2:30, and 2:45 to 3:15. The Wildwood Artist Series donated the money to have Ross Sutter come in and sing with the kids. So, I will be at one of those, and I hope the others can join some of it as well.
And we do have to sing?
You have to sing.
Uh-oh.
We'll give you my key, Kevin.
That might limit participation.
Budget. Bill.
Good evening. Some wonderful presentations tonight from Mr. Forsyth and Dr. Weiland, and now Luke, and I have a spreadsheet, so buckle up. On the screen and at your place tonight, you'll find the 2018-19 Revised Budget for Discussion. We will seek formal approval from the school board at our next meeting, which is on January 10th. So tonight, discussion in action, next meeting on January 10th. So just, by way of orientation on the spreadsheet, and I do realize it's a little bit difficult to view on the screen, so I'll try to follow back and forth as much as I can. But just by way of orientation, you have revenues, and then expenditures by object code, and then expenditures by program dimension, and I'll go over what those are. And then at the bottom, just to provide a little bit of color, uses of funds, expenditures by object dimension, so things like salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials. And then uses of funds, obviously the same funds, but broken out by program dimension, so things like regular and elementary education, special ed, vocational instruction, things of that nature. And then, reading from left to right, 2017-18 actual amounts, so that's audited amounts as of last year, and the end of 2017-18 on June 30th. The 2018-19 preliminary budget, which was approved by the board back in June 2018, before the start of the fiscal year, is required by statute. And then the 2018-19 Revised Budget, what you see in front of you tonight, and what we will be recommending at the next meeting on January 10th. And then the increase or decrease is just simply from the preliminary budget to the revised budget, or vice versa. Okay? So overall, comment, we're in a difficult position right now, because we are forecasting less on the revenue side, lower revenue on the revenue side, and higher expenditures on the expenditure side. And so, I'll get into some of the details of why the movement from the preliminary budget, and then certainly take any questions that you may have, as it is a discussion item tonight. So looking first at the revenue side, the revenue in the general, and this is all general fund. So the revenue in the general fund, we're projecting to be down by about $127,000 from preliminary budget to revised budget. So $127,000, or about .3%, okay? So that's attributed to two main areas, state and federal aid, okay? So, you could see that our federal aid, we're forecasting to be down about $124,000, and that's largely related to our federal special ed, federal special ed allocation, we've seen a decrease there, and that's the cause for the decrease in federal revenue. And the other is state aid. So, a little bit misleading here, you could see the large balances here, that's state aid, which as you remember, is largely paid to us in the form of the state aid funding formula, as appropriated by the legislature. So, a little bit misleading, because you see actually just a slight decrease here of $23,000. However, there are a number of line items that roll into the state aid summary, so things like long-term facilities maintenance aid, operating capital aid, and then finally, the state aid funding formula. So, as you'll remember, state aid is driven by enrollment, and our enrollment target for the preliminary budget was 3,288 students. We are currently at 3,283 students, in that, right in that neighborhood. So we're down five from target, and in order to be conservative, I'm recommending that we build the revised budget on 3,270 students, which would be down 18 from the preliminary budget. So that's the main cause for the decrease there, is a conservative estimate based off of student count, and not knowing where student count is going to go in the second semester, that's what I'm included for a discussion. Moving on to the expenditure side, again, looking at expenditures by object dimension, so this is what I'm going to spend the majority of time on, because it's a little bit easier to get through, so things like salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital and miscellaneous, or the same broken out by administration, district support services, regular, so elementary and regular, secondary instruction, vocational instruction, special ed, instructional support services, pupil support services, sites and buildings, and fiscal and other. And one thing I would like to point out, the information that we presented as part of the levy campaign really does hold true if you look at the graphs down below. So, salaries and benefits, as a percentage of- and regular, secondary instruction, vocational instruction, special ed, instructional support services, pupil support services, sites and buildings, and fiscal and other. And one thing I would like to point out, the information that we presented as part of the levy campaign really does hold true if you look at the graphs down below. So, salaries and benefits, as a percentage of our total, is seventy-seven percent of our budget. So we always talked about school districts being people-intensive organizations, and that certainly does hold true in this column, right? So the blue, plus the orange, that's seventy-seven percent of our expenditure budget in the general fund. And then looking over here, in terms of where we're focusing our dollars, regular, elementary and secondary, regular instruction, plus vocational instruction, plus our special education instruction, accounts for seventy percent of our expenditure budget on the program side. Alright? So, as has historically been the case, and continues to be the case, our district is doing a nice job of focusing our expenditures on the education experience for our kids. Now going back up to the expenditure side, and looking at the difference between preliminary and final budget, our revised budget shows an increase on the expenditure side of six hundred and fifty-three thousand, or one point six percent change from the preliminary budget. Okay? And the increase in expenditures from the revised, or from the preliminary to the revised can be attributed to salaries and benefits, purchase services, and capital expenditures. And I'll just go over those quickly here. So first, starting with salary and benefits, we're talking about things like contractual obligations. Contract settlements, reaching back, in some cases, all the way back to the beginning of the 2017-18 year, that we've settled here in 2018-19. Well, the retro pay for that, instead of being paid in seventeen eighteen, all of that is gonna come through in eighteen nineteen. Staffing additions related to hotspots specifically, or referencing like first grade, for example, when we added that section of first grade based on our student enrollment. So, overall, it is important to note that we have decreased our licensed FTE numbers related to the reductions that were approved by the school board last year, from two hundred and twenty, right in the neighborhood of two hundred and twenty in seventeen eighteen, to two hundred and thirteen in eighteen nineteen. So a reduction of about seven FTE year-over-year, unfortunately related to the budget reductions that we recommended to the board last year. So, what you see here is net of those reductions. Looking at purchase services, so that's an area that is up, about three hundred and seventy-five thousand from preliminary budget. The increase here relates to PSEO, which is post-secondary enrollment options, so we're continuing to see that program grow, and our budget was just not sufficient for what we expect to receive in invoices related to that, specifically Century College PSEO. That's also related to TIES, which TIES is our software program, and the dissolution of TIES, so we have some fees related to that, that we have been assessed as a member district, as all member districts have been assessed. So, it increases partially related to that. And then finally, transportation costs, specifically in the special ed and homeless transportation. So we've seen an increase in our special ed, and a slight increase in our homeless transportation. And so, that's a little bit cumbersome, because when you increase your special ed transportation, the revenue, there's a corresponding increase in revenue. However, that revenue is paid in the year following, right? So we would expect, based on this estimate, to see an increase in our special ed revenue in nineteen twenty. So the budget is a little bit cumbersome. We expect to see that revenue next year, but we do have the expenditure this year. And then finally, in the capital item, so you can see that that's up about one hundred and twenty-five thousand. This is a planned spend-down of the capital projects levy, the technology levy, for a data warehouse. And let me just take a second to explain that, because if it sounds cumbersome, it is. Our capital projects levy, also known as our tech levy, provides a lot of our wireless data warehouse, also a lot of the technology for, the tools for teachers in their classrooms, right? So, we have been slowly building up that restricted fund balance for the capital projects levy, such that we ended last year with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bank restricted for the capital projects levy fund. Okay? We're gonna, we would like to use half of that, and this is in conjunction with the discussions with Patrick, we would like to use half of that to replace the data warehouse this year. Right? And so although it looks like we've increased the budget, it's a planned spend-down of about half of that fund balance. So it still shows as an expense, the source of the funding coming from the capital projects levy fund balance. So overall, that's the overall change from the preliminary to the revised budget. Just a couple things on decision-making and recommendations, so we'll touch on this in the truth and taxation presentation as well. We know that the operating levy dollars, as we have discussed before, will help. We will receive those dollars in nineteen, in 2019, twenty, and forward, but as we've also discussed, it will not solve all of our financial issues that we have going. So, where we're at now is we need to find a way, and we will start at the board level in February, find a way to stop the decrease of our fund balance, in the general fund, because we're getting to a place where we can't, we can't see it go too much lower. So, we'll start that process again at the board level in February, and then just some short-term changes that we will make here. So, we're gonna hold off on some of our staff development expenditures. Now, that will help to the tune of about twenty thousand dollars, I believe. So not a huge number there, but that's something that we can do in the short term, and then we will continue to look at that PSEO further, and the history on that, and why we're seeing some of that increase. So, just in terms of next steps, as I mentioned, just review as a discussion item tonight, give you some time to think about this, ask questions if you need to, and then seek approval at the next meeting on January tenth.
We, I heard, I don't know if it was sometime last year, and I, again, I forget where I heard this, but this idea of negotiating with Century College on the PSEO tuition costs, I thought there was something mentioned, I don't know if anybody else remembers this, but this idea of having them, for lack of a better term, you know, give us a little better deal with our relationship with Century College. I, again, I'm sorry I can't be more clear, I just remember there was some discussion on that. And I know Century College isn't sweating in money either, but if there was a way that we, if they were open to something like that, it seems to me that there's some school districts that are doing that with Normandale possibly now. So I don't know if that's, gives you enough to go by, but certainly look into it and call up there and talk to them about it. Yeah, thank you.
So, you mentioned the budget was based on thirty-two eighty-eight, then it went down to thirty-two eighty-three, and now, and you're gonna revise it for thirty-two seventy? And that's just because you might have more attrition? Is that, I mean?
Yeah, I guess I think I'd like to build a little bit of a buffer in there. Typically, school districts will lose students in the second semester. Now, historically, monomedi has not, at the level that a lot of districts have. What I would like to happen is we stay right where we are, and that, the thirteen or fifteen students that I have above what we've built the revised budget on, provides us with a little bit of a shot in the arm at the end of the year.
Thirty-two seventy number is for next year.
That's, so the revised budget column, I built that on an estimate of three thousand two hundred and seventy students. Yep, yep. So, another reason, I don't wanna get below that number, right? So I wanna come up with a number that I'm confident that we will finish the year in trouble.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Bill. We appreciate you keeping us up to date on those things. Do you have an action item or two tonight? Julie.
I'm Julie Osterbauer, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, and I am asking for approval to award Atomic Sheet Metal, the low bidder, for the exterior insulation finishing system project. This project will be funded from the long-term facility maintenance budget. And a little bit of history with this, this is kind of the stucco-looking stuff on the high school and the middle school, installed in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-six, and two thousand and three, and it's in the advanced stages of degradation, and at the end of its lifespan. And on August twenty-third, the Facility Committee, along with Jeff Jones from CISO, Troy Thompson from Garland Companies, showed photos of the degradation and options for repairs. And we will be covering the ephes with steel-clad wall panels. Any questions? Oh.
She's snapping at you.
She's my sidekick for the night. Thank you. And this will show you, on the right there line, so I'm sorry. Line item one is the second story of the high school. That's where, I don't know, you've seen where the lacrosse balls have been thrown, and the ephes is cracked. Line item two is the chitacua, and then over on top of the media center, there is a penthouse. And then line item three is the top of the middle school. The penthouse is on top of the middle school, so. Any questions?
You have been keeping on telling us about this project right along. So what you need tonight is a motion to approve. Is this bill correct? Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Wyland.
Thank you, Superintendent Depp. We have Chair, Members of the Board. Earlier this evening, I had the community meeting to present the World's Best Workforce information, goals, and you review the past goals, and then how the progress is for that, the past twenty seventeen, eighteen goals, and then what the progress was. And we did submit that progress report to the state this past week. And then now, this evening, I'd like to ask the board to approve our future goals for the eighteen-nineteen school year, so as we go through those. So, I won't go into it as much detail tonight, or at this meeting, because we spent an hour before to go through that, so. With the World's Best Workforce, it is the state legislation that has five different areas, and one of them is school readiness. And under the school readiness goal, this year we would like to look at increasing from thirty-seven percent of our three- and four-year-olds being able to be screened by their fourth birthday to forty percent. They're gonna do a few things like advertising, trying to get the parents more engaged in the program, in order to bring a few more families in. The reading by third grade goal, this year we want to set it for the MCAs to be increasing from sixty-four point five to sixty-seven point five. And the ways, some of the strategies that we're gonna be using with that is focusing a little bit more on the phonics and phoneme awareness in the small group instruction within the K-one, two, and three, and continue with the balanced literacy, and really enhance those small groups. The closing the achievement gap goal, we focused on the math in this area. When the students through third through eighth grade, and in eleventh grade, take the math MCA, we would like to decrease that from twenty-six point seven to twenty-three point seven of the students that are in the free and reduced lunch, to actually decrease that gap between all of the other students in our, in our district taking that, taking that assessment. And some of the ways that we're doing that, for some of the strategies, as you remember, last year we went through the review, where we talked about best practices, so they're gonna be implementing a lot of those best practices with math talks, complex math instruction throughout the district. And then we have the graduation rate goal, which we'd like to see students who graduate in seven years will increase from ninety-eight point two-five in twenty seventeen to a hundred percent in the twenty nineteen. And looking at that through the middle school and the high school, they put in some different programs. One was the Zephyr, not the Zephyr Hour, but the Zephyr Pride, I'm just trying to think of the overall name, I think it was the Zephyr, Zephyr Pride program.
Zephyr Success.
Zephyr Success, that's right. Where they have Zephyr Pride, Zephyr Hour, they have different focus-targeted, I guess, academic interventions to help the students. They also have their connecting, they might have a coach that actually meets students three, four times, so that they feel more engaged within the schools. Then for the career and college readiness goal, we have the eleventh graders, we'd like to meet all three Century College benchmark scores, the reading, math, and science, and the ACT will increase from sixty-five point oh two to sixty-eight oh two. And that, we'll be working on different strategies with some of the reading supports in the middle school and high school to help increase that goal. So if you have any, any questions on some of those goals, anyways, at this time, I would like to ask the board to approve our World's Best Workforce goals.
So moved.
Second.
Additional discussion?
I had a question. I, just one thing really stood out to me, the thirty-seven percent of students screened, isn't that low? It seems so low, it surprised me. Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't know, I'd have to look at, in comparison to what other districts have, I'm not sure. I can talk to Stephanie about that, just to see if that is actually.
I had a question on the same thing. It's thirty-seven percent of current four-year-olds, is that correct?
Three, so.
Three, three and.
Between the ages of three.
So because parents have to tell you they're in the district, because they haven't, they haven't signed up here yet, how do you know that it's thirty percent of all the three-year-olds in the district, or thirty-seven percent?
In the comparison, I'm sure they're using what they, when the kids come to kindergarten, and going back to see, you know, how many.
Actually showed up.
Or screened, and that's all.
So it's based on our, we do, we do keep track, that's the, and through community education, they have the demographics report, but, and one of the, so the point of this goal is to screen students, or children, early. So that's why, I don't know that that actually is low, to screen between third and fourth, three and four-year-olds. So, but the idea is to get them early, and so you wouldn't necessarily expect to have that.
And then is that tied with ECFE? If they do need follow-up services?
Right. At the preschool programming, then they would have special education services if they needed some additional support. So that's the reason they wanna try to catch them between three and four, so that they have that year before kindergarten to work with them. And I'm sure as they get closer to, like, being five, that's when we try to get the hundred percent of them screened by that time, so then they're probably reaching out to the families and contacting them. I know even this past summer, at Wildwood, there was a few kids that were starting kindergarten that were coming in for the screening, like, a week or two before school. But see, we'd like to try to get them in earlier, 'cause if there was anything that we could really support and help their child with, at that time, we would know, and we could help them out. So, that's why they, that's why they set that goal. Yeah.
I was struck by that fact also, that it seemed low. As a parent, I would think that would be something you'd wanna do. So, I, you know, for curiosity, I mean, if there was some readily available data that said, are we high, low, middle, I mean, it'd be interesting anyway.
Right. I can ask Stephanie a little bit about that, to see if other districts, you know, what their percentage is, 'cause I know there's a few school districts that set that as one of their goals for the World's Best Workforce, so I'm sure there'd be some comparable.
I know we have Century College students that come down and help in the screening, which is kinda fun to see, too.
Anything else? Motion of the second, all in favor of approving this, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. Good evening and welcome. I'm supposed to say that, because there's supposed to be a sellout crowd here for the truth and taxation hearing, and there might not be quite a sellout. However, this is very prescribed, and I'm going to give you the disclaimer ahead of time, that although there are some empty seats here for the viewing audience and for the board, there are certain requirements of the truth and taxation hearing that I have to say in a certain order, in a certain way. I like to try to make finance presentations helpful and user-friendly. I hope that this will be helpful. I'm not confident that it will be overly user-friendly. I have to read a lot of this, and get through it in a certain order, and make sure that I say a certain thing. So, welcome to the 2018-19 property tax hearing. The requirements of the tax hearing are really threefold, and are important this year, they're important every year, but specifically this year related to the operating levy, the revoke and replace that was graciously approved by our taxpayers last month on November sixth. So, the first requirement here is to look at the eighteen pay nineteen proposed property tax levy, the change, and specific reasons for that change. Second, talk about the current year budget, distribution of revenues by source, and spending by program, and then have a time for public comment and questions. So, just before we turn the page here, so you've heard me say this before, when I, when I reference 2018- I reference 2018 pay nineteen, what exactly does that mean? Alright, so, in September, you'll recall certifying the preliminary eighteen pay nineteen levy, okay? Taxpayers receive their property tax, their estimated property tax statements in the month of November, last month, and tonight, we're recommending that the board would certify the final levy for eighteen pay nineteen. So what's changed since September? Alright, so we obviously had a revoke and replace on the November ballot that was successful. And so, where this will go from here is 2018 is the data year, 2019, calendar 2019 is the year that this tax is payable for our taxpayers, and then finally, in 1920, is the district revenue. So it really spans three years, but that's the explanation on why I keep referring to eighteen pay nineteen. So first, starting with levy information, in total, so you can see that we have four different funds on the board here, the general fund, community education fund, general debt service fund, and OPEB debt service fund, okay? And I have included three columns this year, which is really exciting, actually, there's four columns there, but three that I'll reference. And the reason why there are three columns has to do with the November vote, okay? So, the middle column, the prelim eighteen pay nineteen, you're going to see this repeat itself as we go over and look at these funds, but the eighteen pay nineteen preliminary column, that is the amount that the school board approved in a, on the prelim basis in September, okay? So that's the amount, obviously, the actual levy is from last year, and then the proposed eighteen pay nineteen is the amount that we are recommending for certification tonight, and that does include the increase from the November vote, okay? So you can see that overall, the total increase, all funds, is seven point nine-nine percent, okay? And so for the viewing audience, I'll review what each fund is, so the general fund, obviously our largest fund, and really is the fund for the day-to-day operations of the school district. And so, as you'll recall, back in November, the revoke and replace had to do with our general fund operating levy, and so obviously, that is the biggest amount of the increase is in the general fund. The community ed fund, community programs for early and learning to adult enrichment, Dr. Wyland referenced that tonight, and that has a thirty-three thousand dollar increase year-over-year. The debt service fund, that's principal and interest on our debt service bonds, so largely the new Wildwood School, but there are some others in there as well. And then finally, OPEB debt service. So OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and when we get to that slide, just so I have something to talk about on that slide, I'll save some of that for exactly what that is. But that's principal and interest on our voter-approved debt service bonds, and it is important to note that this bottom one here does expire in 2022. So we're already getting towards the end of that, so that will be a good thing when we see that paid off. Starting first with the general levy comparison, and I won't go over every detail, but you can see that at the bottom, the overall increase is one million twenty-two dollars, one million twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, right? So that's comparing the proposed eighteen pay nineteen to the actual from last year, okay? So, as you would expect to see from the November vote, you'll recall, based on our adjusted pupil units and increasing our voter-approved authority, we expected about a million dollars in additional revenue in the first tier. I'm sure you remember that conversation. And you could see that top line there, referendum levies, the compare, in comparison to last year, it's just over a million, right? One million, one hundred and seven dollars. So that really is the increase from, from the November vote. Just looking at a couple of other ones, so our capital projects referendum, also known as our technology levy that we talked about earlier, that we're going to fund that data warehouse out of, that increased forty thousand dollars. The capital projects levy is tied to what's known as the net tax capacity, and that is the value of, most of the value of our market value in our taxing district. That net tax capacity, year-over-year, went up six point three percent, okay? So that's, that's good news for our taxpayers and good news for market values in our community. So if the net tax capacity goes up, capital projects referendum revenue goes up, and the inverse is also true. So, NTC went up six point three percent, and the increase there is commensurate with that. The equity levy is one that I would like to look at. So, the equity levy has an inverse relationship with the referendum levy. So you can see that because our referendum levy went up, equity levy looks at our levy dollars in comparison to some of our area districts, and there is always going to be an inverse relationship, and those slight decrease in equity revenue has to do with the increase in our referendum levy. And then finally, our long-term facilities maintenance revenue down here at the bottom, you'll recall that was a three-year statutory increase, and the increase of twenty-seven thousand relates to the third of three years statutory increase in LTFM revenue. So in all likelihood, that will level off and continue to be pretty steady here going forward. So in total, the general fund increase year-over-year is recommended at twelve point two-seven The community education levy, I'll go through some of these a little bit faster, so as I mentioned, programs in the community education levy include obviously, community education, early childhood, school readiness, adult basic education, my fear is I'm forgetting some, but I don't know if Kathy's paying that close attention.[962.00][962.00](laughter) So, the main change here in the thirty-three thousand dollar increase has to do with a positive adjustment in school age care levy, okay? So, what you see here is not only the current year levy, but also prior year adjustments, okay? So we had a prior year adjustment to the good in school age care, and that's really the cause for the thirty-two thousand dollar increase in the community education levy. Looking at the debt service levy, the increase is very small here, point six eight percent year-over-year, and really, the only increase here has to do with long-term facilities maintenance, which again, is the same as in the general fund. A portion of your LTFM levy revenue is paid in the general fund, also paid in the debt service fund, the three-year statutory increase has to do with, with the increase that we're seeing here in the debt service fund as well. And then finally, the OPEB debt service comparison, OPEB again standing for Other Post-Employment Benefits, this is an account to pay for contractual obligations for certain employees who meet criteria, criteria in their employment contracts, right? So no change year-over-year, very small, sixteen hundred dollars, as I mentioned, expires in 2022, so we are nearing the end of the OPEB debt service levy. Now, just looking at a visual representation of the levies in total, seventeen pay eighteen, eighteen pay nineteen, so you can see that in the blue, that is the 2019 levy, in the yellow, yellow, I think we'll call that, both Montomedi colors, that's the 2018 levy. You can see that the increase, as we mentioned before, related to the revoke and replace is in the general fund, the other funds are relatively flat. The total increase year-over-year, general, community service, debt service, and OPEB debt service is one million eighty-eight thousand. Going now to the second part of the presentation, current year budget information. So this is always a difficult one with timeline, because I just talked about the eighteen-nineteen revised budget, okay? We're required here to talk about the preliminary budget, which was approved by the board in June, right? So, tying these budgets back and forth between what I talked about a couple of agenda items ago, and this is going to be difficult, what I'm required to do here is show the preliminary budget that was approved in June. So looking at the composite budget, so you can see the general fund is by far and away the largest fund that we have, accounts for eighty-two percent of the total, right? So, on the revenue side, thirty-nine and a half million of a forty-eight point two-million-dollar revenue budget can be attributed to the general fund. As we know, on the revenue side in the general fund, state aid is the largest source of our revenue, is appropriated by the legislature each biennium, 2019 will be a funding year, and so the legislature, as we know, will be meeting to discuss the funding formula for the next two years. Seventy-three percent of our revenue budget comes to us from the state, and then twenty-one percent from the local levy, both voter and non-voter-approved local levy amounts, okay? So, also, as we've talked about on the expenditure side, by way of not going through every line item, but just making some general comments, obviously, public education is a people-intensive organization, right? School districts are people-intensive organizations, close to eighty percent, if you add up our salaries and benefits, of our budget is attributed to salary and benefits, right? School districts are heavily people organization, the remaining twenty percent, if we look down the line here, is relatively fixed. So, overall, as we know, a large percentage of the funding on the revenue side is tied to student count, right? That's critically important. And it's also important for the viewing audience to know that administration and the school board is doing what they can on the revenue side with the amounts that we can control, right? So of, in the general fund anyway, of that thirty-nine point five million, the state and the state legislature determines the funding formula for the vast majority of that, right? If you look at the amount that we actually have local control on, that amount is very, very small, but critically important that it's managed appropriately. Okay, looking at some visual representations here, first, revenue by fund, this is just a review of the previous slide, so eighty-two percent of our revenue budget is in the general fund, three percent in food service, four, point four in the community ed fund, and then ten percent in the debt service fund, and point seven in the OPEB debt service fund. So, just a visual representation of our revenue by fund. The next one is the inverse, and you would hope that this would follow sort of along the line, and it does. So, almost identical percentages here, excuse me, breakout by expenditure by fund. Looking deeper at the general fund, as it is the largest fund in our school district, largest piece of the pie, looking at the expenditures by program area in a little bit more detail. So just as a point of illustration here that I'd like to make, that I did make earlier tonight, if you look at, my mouse works here, elementary and secondary regular instruction, right, that's nineteen point seven million, and then special education instruction, seven million twenty-two thousand. You add those two up, that's about seventy percent of our total expenditures in those two program areas. As I mentioned before, I'll mention it again, this school district and this school board continues to do a great job of focusing expenditures on students and our educational experience for our kids. There are percentages that are different than that, and I think that's something we can take pride in, is that we are focusing our expenditures where they should be focused. Looking at the other areas here, administration and support services, so that's obviously things like the school board, building and district administration, our business area, and then our teaching and learning department. Regular instruction speaks for itself, so does vocational, special education instruction, instructional support services, right? So one point seven million in instructional support services, that's things like our curriculum department, our media, our staff development, a lot of that falls into the instructional support services. Pupil support services, that's things like counseling, health, our transportation contract is a big chunk of that. And then sites and buildings, that's things like our custodial department, operations and maintenance, and then our operating capital, and then fiscal and other, that's property and workers' compensation insurance primarily. Visual representation of the general fund expenditures by program, again, just showing on a graph here what we reviewed on the last slide. So getting towards the end here, just a couple of summary slides. So what are the main variables that cause property tax increases and decreases? So, this slide is intended to provide an understanding of what causes the change, right? So I mentioned at the beginning, the overall increase year-over-year in our operating levy is seven point nine-nine percent, right? So that's the increase in school district levy revenue, right? That's not necessarily the increase in everybody's property taxes year-over-year. Some people may have a negative change, some people may have more than seven point nine-nine percent. These are the variables summarized that will cause your change in market value, alright? So first one, changes in market value, change in taxable market value from an assessment. So, if you add a deck onto your house, if you finish a basement, if you put an addition, and you have an assessment, that's going to change your market value, and that's going to change your tax impact largely, okay? So changes in class rates are history, so change in valuation of other taxable properties, things like seasonal properties, agriculture, commercial, if those class rates change, your valuation could change. Obviously, voter-approved referendums for things, for school districts, cities, counties, that will change your taxes. And then state adjustments by the legislature and funding or a bonding session. So those are sort of the four main reasons why your taxes may change. And then this last slide here, I realize it's pretty small, but interesting, this is the overall referendum market value history in our taxing district, so all our parts in the nine communities that we serve over the last fifteen years, right? So, referendum market value, that's the market value of all of our taxable property, excluding ag and seasonal, which we obviously don't have a ton of that here. So you can see that we are, our RMV, a referendum market value, again, which is different than the net tax capacity, but our RMV is up three point one-four percent year-over-year. So that's a nice change, right? That's good for our taxpayers and good for the properties in our district. And the overall change, or the average change over the last fifteen years is two point four-eight percent, okay? So, this is a new high watermark for our district, at two billion two-hundred-and-sixty-five million, that's an awfully big number, and as high as it has ever been. And you can see that we have really recovered from the four or five years, from '08 to 2012, where we had negative percentage changes in RMV. So that's a great thing to see for our taxing district. And then finally, looking at tax impact for residential homestead. So, I mentioned the overall increase for the school district was seven point nine-nine percent, so this slide is an attempt to take that and push it towards tax impact for an estimated market value, right? So, I'll use the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar market value, because we're very familiar with that calculation. If you have a home valued at three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, last year, your tax bill related to the school district, right, so this is voter, non-voter, all funds combined, would have been one thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars, everybody sees that? Now, your three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home would have increased, if it was on average, by the three point one-four percent change in value, right? So you go from three-fifty up to that three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-nine-ninety, and your tax bill would increase from nineteen fifty-one to twenty-one twenty-four rounded, right? So an increase of one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars year-over-year, which is an increase of eight point eight-four percent, okay? So that's, that's how you take the seven point nine-nine percent and push it towards your market value change, okay? So that's really the overview, I know there was a time, I'll hand it back over to you, Board Chair Shortz, I know there's a time for public comment, I know we do have some administrators that are residents, if they want to make comments.
Can I answer questions, anyone? Anyone on the board, all residents?
And then, we do need to certify the final, or the board does, so what I would like to do is hand this back over to you, and have you take it from here on the final page, if you wanted to read that.
That's this that I.
That's what you have in front of you, yep.
This just outlines what those levies are. Whereas pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the school board of Independent School District Number 832, Montomedi, Minnesota, is authorized to make the following proposed tax levies for general purposes. The general fund, nine million three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Community services, three-hundred-and-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Debt service, four million seven-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-two dollars and thirty cents. The OPEB debt service, three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. And the total proposed tax levy, fourteen million seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, no. Seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Thousand dollars, I'm sorry, there's too many numbers here. Now therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 832, Montomedi, Minnesota, that the levy to be levied in 2018 for collection 2019 is set at fourteen million seven-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. The clerk of the IST 832 school, the board is authorized to certify the proposed levy to the county auditor of Washington County, Minnesota. And we need a motion on that or anything?
So moved.
Any additional discussion?
Is there a typo here on the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
But she read it correctly.
Yes, I know that, but, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eight thirty-two.
I'm sorry, okay.
She read it correctly. Thank you for all your work on this. You've been doing this a long time, right? You can't fool me. All right, thanks Bill. Committee report.
Community reports. Do you have one?
Well, I, there was a meeting last, an AMSD board meeting last Friday, and Alice and Barbara there, along with me, and they gave her some, just, we approved the legislative platform and updated position papers. We had Chris Adamson and Lori Grivna, the government affairs consultants for AMSD, give short presentations on the upcoming legislative session, and how we might be a good time now to approach our legislatures and talk about, you know, reach out to them and maybe have coffee with them, and, and how to, how to kind of speak with them, and the director of, director of communications there, he gave a little, little primer on social media for us, and so, yeah, that's about it, really.
I really, MAF had their board meeting on Monday night, and really, they just approved budgets and a few sponsorships. Kevin, unless there was anything else you wanted me to share, I, that really, it was really a minimal meeting.
All-fund drive still happening.
All-fund drive is still happening. Thank you to the board for participating.
Hundred percent.
That's great.
MSBA, we're the delegate assembly, Julie was the delegate, who will be having new delegates next year, if people are interested, we talked about that earlier.
AR sent out the list of what was approved by that delegate assembly. The next metro area coffee is tomorrow in Roseville, if you want to attend that. And then MSBA is moving more of their professional development to webinars. If you see those webinars come through, and you can't make those webinars, if you sign up for them after the webinar, then you get a link to watch the recorded presentation. So don't be dissuaded by the timing of the webinar, because there was one this week, I think at noon yesterday. And so, yes, if you're at work or eating lunch, it's not convenient for you, if you do sign up, then you get the link to the recording. So consider that when you see those come through.
Can I piggyback on where MSBA?
So I wanted to just give a brief summary of the delegate assembly, and if anyone wanted that, that this was my third year in attending the assembly, and there were more than 100 delegates that came together on December 1st, and these resolutions were brought forth by our peers across the state. There were 22 resolutions dealing with topics from education funding to school start times. If anyone wants to see, I brought the whole book, and in coming up with our legislative stuff, if there's any of these that you wanted to look at. But I did want to highlight one vote on resolution number two, which I have not seen, was a unanimous vote, and listening to Bill's presentation tonight makes it appropriate. Be it resolved that MSBA urges the legislature to adopt one predictable and equitable special ed funding formula, which eliminates the cap and returns transportation to a fully-funded, dedicated revenue source. There was a lot of good discussion about that, and a lot of discussion on calculating transportation for the current year instead of the past year. And all the problem balancing the books when you allocate money based on last year. So, anyway, that was number two, and it was unanimous, so. Anyway, just wanted to share that.
916 is in your packet. Any sub report?
Education Equity Alliance, EEA, had a meeting last week. Barbara attended, along with Mike Newbeck, and Courtney McCormick, and Gretchen Brunner.
Amy Anderson.
Yeah, Amy Anderson. So we had a nice showing for Montomedi. Again, the Education Equity Alliance is the partnership between North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, as a racially isolated district, and Montomedi. We've had this partnership going since EMD dissolved, I want to say it's about six, seven years now. But, the meeting was good. We have our two coordinators from North St. Paul, is Lisa Tao, and Courtney McCormick from Montomedi. And part of bringing the steering committee together is to try to align our, our mission together, and I think, you know, there was, it has had some ups and downs. And I think with the two women that are the coordinators, we are in really good hands. They're trying to assess just where we've been, I think there's just some, trying to untangle some of this. And then there was some nice discussion from the gentleman that was the principal from middle school in Maplewood?
Elementary.
Elementary school. And his idea, which I really thought was a good one, and echoed, was this idea of having students as a part of the steering committee. And we've had that in the past, and haven't, we didn't this time. So, some good energy, and I think we're, we are committed to this. And it benefits both school districts, and it's really amazing the differences Five Miles make, and, you know, the difference between our schools and their schools, and we, hopefully we can work, get the best of all the, both schools and bring them together, pollinate the other buildings, so. Barb, did you have any you wanted to add?
No, I'll just reiterate that I'm excited about the partnership and, and recommitting to our mission. I think, I think the leadership right now is really going to move us forward, so they have some good energy around the work, so I'm excited for it.
Any other community reports?
Community ed?
Just wanted to point out that the annual Tree of Light was held last Friday, and that was sponsored by the Montomedi, Montomedi area food shelves that supports the families through the holidays. Presenters included the Montomedi Teacher of the Year, this is Newman, and the event raised over $12,000, which was a new record. Also want to point out that the community lunch had a record high of 98 members, and I know Julie and Kevin, and Superintendent Duffin was there, so that was great. And then also, the winter-spring community ed brochure is at the printer, and online registration will begin December 20th, so we will see all the fun activities that we get to choose from very soon.
If you've not come to a community ed lunch, it's $7. It's the best deal out there. Food comes from Roma, and we have our passages program, students help wait tables, and then there's usually some kind of a musical ensemble, in this case, it was the Silver Harmony Singers. And it's just a great thing, so if you're not at work and can stop by for the lunch, we have the monthly now through April?
Well, we'll have April, no, March, April, and May.
Okay.
The next one. Anybody else, any reports?
Just a little bit PTO met this morning, and I gave a little bit of an update on what we're doing. Barb helped me with the update, talking about the strategic planning that we're going to be doing, and Alice gave a nice presentation on which, what her job here is in the district, and really upping the ante on how we're communicating with everybody, and Tony Pierce. And Tony Pierce gave a, an update on the special ed plans, the sorts of things they're going to be working on in concert with Alice, and so, they got a lot of information this morning, which is really great, so, just a little update.
So I had one more date that I just wanted to mention. I'm not sure if Lucy had this in her notes, but the, the day at the Capitol, on March 25th, MSBA date at the Capitol. So, I might want to just put that on your calendar.
Anybody else?
Okay, I will piggyback on, on what Mike was talking about with the PTO parent connect today. We did get a chance to talk a little bit about strategic planning, and so I'll just put it out there, that we'll be looking for community members to join us in our strategic planning process, and so people should start looking for that, coming out in maybe January, February, the call for, for some people to join us. So there'll be lots of opportunity and for lots of involvement. I did want to just highlight a few places I'd been in around the district, including the Montomedi Hour Code on December 4th, which was, it was amazing, and if you had, I was expecting you to be there with some robotics, you know.
I was, I've been there and missed you. Years previous.
Okay, but it was so packed, I don't know if you, you know, if you had been there at the same time I was there, I know parents were talking about how they're having a hard time dragging their kids away. Having such a good time. So, we got some good pictures out of that, too, that you should look for, because there are some really, it was, it was really fun to see the students teaching their parents, and the parents, actually, there was one point where two parents were conferring with one another, because they, for the life of them, figured it out, so it was pretty, it was pretty fun. I did get a chance to tour the White Bear Center for the Arts, which I haven't, I hadn't seen before, and I just want to mention that, because it is such a remarkable space, and really great, there's some really great opportunities coming up for our students to participate in a writing contest, and then a visual arts contest as well. And just the commitment by the staff there to really advocate for arts in schools, and then just really include our, our students, and seeing arts is such a big part of our community, and it was, it was a really fun place to be, and I just, and whenever it's open, you can just go and check out the gallery, so I'll put in a plug for that. I also attended the Greater White Bear Lake Community Foundation award ceremony, I don't know what, if that's what it was called officially, but in addition to Julie Comfort winning one of the, or getting one of those grants for the binoculars, also, our, our students from the Modeling a Protein story, that, that group of students that we've heard about a few different times, they also earned a grant from the Greater White Bear Lake Community Foundation. So, so I was, it was a really nice event, and we're really thankful for the support of our community as well. And I, so I did a good job this time, because I was, I was tracking, I noticed last time Luke and I had a lot of the same things, but this time I was tracking with you, so I was checking things off, so I didn't repeat. But I did want to highlight the, the concerts, the middle school concerts as well. In the sixth grade concert, it was standing, the choir concert I was at, it was standing room only, I actually watched it from the hallway, because there are just so many people out there coming out to see that choir, and so, really, really remarkable concerts, events, just participation as well, I mean, that was an incredible-sized choir, I was really impressed with that. So, I think, oh, there was one other thing that I hadn't heard about until just recently, and that was, last time we were talking, I had gotten to see the sneak preview of Once on this island, the musical, and I've, I've learned recently that they, that the musical won, or received several honors from Spotlight Education, which is a program of the Hennepin Theater Trust, and it honors high school musicals and students by formally recognizing the extraordinary achievements and process of developing young artists onstage and offstage. So, there were a number of awards won from, for that musical, so, which I'm not surprised at all about, I don't know if you all got out to see it, but it was, yeah, it was very impressive, so. And I think, I think with that, that's my report.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn, please.
Meeting's adjourned.